Definitely one time not being seven o'clock P M the school board now is called always in session. Actually, we do have enough for have a meeting of a room and everybody had opportunity to look over the agenda. Any questions about this agenda? Everybody have to look over the previous board minutes. You got up to look over the financials, any questions about the previous board minutes or the financials? Okay, I give it to Simmons to approve those.
I'll make a motion to accept the financials for your board minutes in the agenda.
Got motion set move for the question out of our family's both that I. Approve you same size. Next thing is the superintendent's report.
And tonight I want to welcome our guests and we're really excited to get to showcase our students and Ms. Manning is gonna introduce I guess her team and they've been doing some amazing things at their chess competitions and so they're gonna share a little bit of that with you tonight. So Ms. Manning, come on and take over.
Thank you all for letting us come. I'm gonna have them come on up. So y'all can see them. Come on over if you played chess this year. Got a variety. We had third grade through eighth grade playing this year. So we've got some variety of ages and groups to come on up here and turn around the rest of the stage. We're so excited to be here, not embarrassed or shy or anything. All right, I'm gonna introduce the, um, this is Adeline Yarborough. You want to tell, I gotta, let me just stop talking. Y'all tell them your name and what grade you're in.
My name is Adeline Yarborough and I'm in the fifth grade.
Baby Cox, I'm in the fourth grade.
I'm Callan Johnson. I am in the fourth grade.
I'm Elliot Riley. I'm in the fourth grade.
Er, you're a member. I'm in the third grade.
I'm Isai Mendoza and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Eagle Farmo and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Connor Riley and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Jason Jester and I'm in fourth grade.
And our eighth grade participants are still at Washed Hall. We just got through the game up there. Um, let's see, there's not even running in third grade. So it's just been busy. We've had all kinds of stuff going on. So I'm so proud of these guys for showing up and the parents, thank y'all for bringing them. Um, cause I know it's just a busy, busy time of year, but what I want to talk about is just what chess, playing chess has meant to these kids in our school. Um, a lot of times people are, I always play chess all the time. Well, chess teaches you a lot of things about your life as well as just playing the game. So one of the things that I have asked them to think about is what are some things that you have learned by playing chess, either vocabulary wise, um, skill wise, things that you've learned about that have to do with chess, but also can carry over into life. So does anybody have anything that they want to say about what, like maybe your one word that you thought about about chess? Let's hear it. She has a speech. Prepared. I love it.
I've learned that to have a good sportsmanship and concentrate on my moves. I like how some people have a good attitude if they win or lose. I hope that I hope to improve next year by practicing. Even though you might be a little bad, it's fun to experience to have. It's a fun experience to have. I also good. It's also good that when a friend loses to tell them, tell them it's okay. I love chess and the experience that I had.
Very good job. That's great. Callan, did you want to tell them?
I had two words poker face.
Just two words poker face. Before we start worrying about what I'm teaching as you do, let's explain what poker face means.
So if you make a bad move or your opponent makes a bad move, don't just be like, because that, that just signals to them, they made a mistake or you made a mistake.
So you don't want to bring that up because then what could happen?
They could take a piece or a checkmate.
Yeah. So we always just want to kind of just play like we don't see their mistake or uh, if we make a mistake, we don't want to give that away. Cause sometimes that alerts them to check out what you did. All right. Anybody else have a word that they want to share?
Sacrifice.
Isai, you had a great one. Sacrifice. Tell us about sacrifice.
Sacrifice. Sometimes you have to sacrifice a piece so you can, in order to win. You have to lose a piece so you can get more pieces of the win.
So how would you, how would you associate that with your life?
Sometimes you have to do things that you really like to get the greater than.
Kind of said that better than myself. Sometimes in chess, you have to give up a piece that you, it may be your favorite piece, but you know that in order to make your opponent fall into a trap or to lead them away from what you're trying to do, you have to sacrifice that piece. And that's, that's a great, a great. Sometimes they have to give up things in order to play chess or to practice or to go to a tournament. So that was a great, a great thing to say. Raise your hand if you won something this year. McGill was a winner. Tell us about your trophy. Or your experience or anything. Was this your first tournament that we went to? Yeah, my fifth graders, this was their first time, but actually was it a first time for a field trip? I think, cause they weren't able to go on a field trip last year because of COVID. So this was their first competition and field trip and everything. And I think they were a little bit nervous when we went, but as they played, they kind of got over that. And McGill, you just came out of nowhere, didn't you? Do you want to say anything about any of your opponents or your strategy? Did you have a strategy? Just little. He practiced really hard in our, in our classes. Um, every day we would have a match between each other. They play each other for their opponents, but sometimes when they went to a match, they would end up having to play each other during that match. Um, our third graders that just finished last week, our third grade, we had two students who hadn't lost a game all morning long and they ended up having to play each other for the, the first place trophy. And it was tough because Julian, you were one of those guys, weren't you? Do you want to talk about that? It was a little, it was a little tough because you were playing Bryson. Y'all were teammates. Y'all had been, y'all are friends. Y'all play on the playground together. Y'all learn classes together and then you had to battle each other out for that first place trophy, didn't you? Yeah. But what, can you, do you remember what happened?
Um, he put me in checkmate.
And you were like, you put me in checkmate. And he said, no, no, it's not checkmate. Remember that?
Yeah.
And then, and then what did you say?
He said checkmate again.
Yeah, you could see it. He was like, checkmate. And Bryson was like, no, no. They, um, they really rooted for each other and they, they didn't want each other to lose, but they mean one of them had to come away with the, with the trophy and one didn't. So, but that's another thing that they learned is how to lose because what's going to happen when you play? Always a winner and always a loser. And so you gotta learn how to accept that, don't you? Yeah. Jesse, do you have anything? You want to talk about one of your words or strategy or what's your favorite piece to move? The queen. What's so good about the queen? Yeah, she's a powerful piece, isn't she? Molly, what's your favorite, Molly? Just kidding. Molly's over there. Danny, what's your favorite piece? Tell us about the rook.
I like how long or how far it can go and how it can go two different ways.
Okay. What's so good? I, I like using that rook and that queen together. What is so good about the rook and the queen together?
So the rook can move like this and like this and the queen can move like that. So it's really easy because if you have those two is you can, it'll be easy to make and you can go as far as you want.
And you can push that opponent, can't you? Connor, what's something that you've learned from chess? Cause you've been playing a few years.
I learned about, uh, good sportsmanship because I'm very competitive at a lot of things. You can ask Kelly. And I love, I learned new strategies about chess and more valid, valuable lessons in life.
What is one of your favorite strategies?
My favorite strategy is the, uh, using the, uh, rook. I believe it's the rook. Leaves the rook and I like to move my pawns out to that by the sides. I then move the rook to make sure that the piece on the other side, that rook will be able to catch it.
And that's kind of a way to keep the opponent from guessing what you're doing when you're doing something over to the side. Here's another winner. This is Eder Susana. He won our seventh grade tournaments. Come on up there. You gonna show me your trophy?
And the last two.
Those are medals from previous years.
Yeah.
We were just talking about the things that we've learned, like some of our favorite strategies or pieces or things that you've learned from chess.
Well, uh, my favorite piece here has to be the queen or the rooks, cause those two together can easily, um, uh, just capture the king. Cause if you have two rooks and, um, if, if you cornered a king in a, in a spot, uh, you can put a queen diagonally or, um, one in front, one, one, um, row in front of, of the king. And also, and then get the other two rooks, uh, in the row, in the same row as the king. And, and it, and then the king can't move. Cause if he moves, if he moves forward, the, the king will still be in check. And he can't move anywhere else. Cause the king can only move one space, which would make it a checkmate. And, um, things I've learned is to stay calm, even if you're like pressured in most times, always stay calm. Cause, um, even when you're down to pawns, but you can still win if he, if he took all your bishops, rooks, um, knights, any of that, even your queen, you can still win if you have pawns and determination. Cause that, that got me this trophy right here. Cause I, I was down to four pawns, five and a knight. And I just decided to, to plan ahead and decide to put a pawn in front of another pawn or yeah, across a pawn just by one space. And then I kept on moving that, using my horse to protect those from the, his, started opponent had a bishop, a queen, a knight and his king. So I kept on moving that one, uh, one piece at a time. Later I got my, I got a queen and another, I got two queens and, and the knight. So I used that to eliminate his bishop and knight, which got him to a king. And I think it was a knight. I can't remember. And then, yeah, that's how I won the last game. And, and that opponent was actually pretty, pretty well. He, he know he, he knew what he was doing. And yeah, he tried to pressure me into making decisions that, that I would regret later, but I stayed calm. And that's something that chess has taught me, stay calm in the most difficult times.
Even when you're put on the spot, you just walk into a room full of people. Strategy, one of your favorite games that you play?
The queen's rap. That's, that's just, that's the, that's the easiest. You just, yeah, it's just, so, um, the queen's rap is basically you move the planning lines here, white or black, the right, the first, the, the right pawn of the king's, king's side. King's side, yeah, king's side or the left pawn on the, on the, of the king's side. Yeah. So when you do that, then you, you take out your queen and, uh, put it in, um, depending it's A three, I think, or no, four, it's A four or five. And then that'll go to your pawn, to the pawn of the king. And well, that's next to your king. Now, uh, and then you take your, um, your bishop and also move that, cause it should leave an opening to, to, uh, the same, that same pawn. So you move your, you, so you move that, that bishop to where that pawn is. Now that king is in check. Now, uh, when the king is in check, it can only do, it can move a piece and kill that piece or move another piece and block the piece from attacking that piece. Or the king can just kill it and it won't be in check. But since, um, the queen is protecting the bishop, uh, the, the king cannot kill the, um, the bishop or else it'll still be in checkmate. Uh, and that is check and it'll be in checkmate. And it can't move anywhere else because it's surrounded by all the other pieces, like the bishop and the pawns. Yeah.
And that probably made no sense to you, but each one of these kids was working it out. They were playing that whole scenario in their mind, the queen's rap. Cause they don't only know how to play it, they also know how to protect from it. That's one of the things I've said, we're not going to the tournament until you understand the queen's rap. So we learned how to play it. And we also learned how to keep our opponent from doing it to us. Callan?
I remember when we lost and moved that one match when we were practicing.
He did.
It was like, wow.
Because that, that, that move, you can win a, you can put a opponent in checkmate in three moves. It's a fast game. They have 20 minute games at the tournaments. And so when a kid gets beat by the queens right there, like, what just happened? So it's pretty interesting. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? I appreciate, um, all of our schools for letting us do this and for our school district for letting us go on these trips. It's beneficial, not only for our students to get out and meet other kids who are just like them, but also so that they can go and kind of have their shining moments sometimes. Um, and just, they love it. They play with passion and they all come away from every tournament thinking about what they can do to improve next time. So I really appreciate that. You have one more thing?
Are we gonna have a next term chess tournament?
That's what they also say every time we leave. When can we play again? So we're hopefully going to have an in-house chess tournament at our schools later on in the spring. So we can get all of our students involved. We did that a few years ago and we had it in, um, in the library. We had kids that don't normally play chess, come out and just kind of see what it's all about. Cause it is a fun game and I encourage all the parents to learn so that you can play with your kids. Cause I know we got a lot of brother sister teams going and sometimes that gets a little heated. Ellie, Jesa, what do you think? Danny? Sometimes it can be a little heated with your sibling.
He's my dad.
Oh, she uses her dad. Okay. Well, there you. I think that's all we got. We appreciate you letting us go. Thank you.
You're all certainly welcome to stay, but if you need to leave, you're welcome to do that to the senior or the art. Thank you so much for coming.
I'm y'all pay attention. These young people just taught y'all the training management. You're with me to management training courses. They just taught you management training course. My, my favorite line in every movie is, this is chess, not chess.
Very impressive.
Good job.
Yes. Okay, moving on into, um, my superintendent's report. I did get copy of that to you. So I'm not going to go through each part of it. So looking at questions, there are a few things I just wanted to point out. Um, our enrollment, um, as of last week was six twenty-five. And our pre-K is still at forty-one. We do still have some slots available there. If you know anybody that still needs, um, a program, uh, we can still take some students. We have space for fifty. So we can take nine more. And our new RN did start training, um, this month with Ms. Pa and it's catching on very quickly. And I'm already working on our COVID updates for me. Um, on the spreadsheet that is maintained for me with our cases. And I did give you an updated case count. Just tonight I had put it with the, the agenda for you because we have a few more now than we had last week when I sent out the packet. We do, we did have thirty active quarantines and our students right now on two active cases. And that's still not at that ten percent threshold. So you know, we've still kept the optional status, but we did have to quarantine some, um, for that. And we have one active quarantine on staff. Um, right now we, we did have an active case, but they are back at work now. So we've had a few, we're starting to see a little more activity than we saw a few months ago, but it's still, um, not, not terrible. And the northern state and the northern counties are, are starting to see a big hit. So I'm keeping an eye on that too. And then again, with our current policy being a ten percent quarantine to implement a mask mandate, we've not had to do that. It's remained optional. And, and I did give you that map, just showing you kind of where we stand compared to all the different counties in the state, um, right now. And that's not our school population. That's our whole school district boundary population that you're looking at there. And did want to point out on the transportation maintenance facilities, uh, we should be getting our new, um, trip bus, the diesel bus in January. Um, but they're still, you know, we're still waiting on gasoline buses because they, they keep having some changes. And so we're, we're still on order with those, but those will be a little later. And, and the roof, if y'all have been by or haven't been by, drive by, but the maintenance building and the best roofs have been replaced. They got that done, um, over Thanksgiving break. Um, they've been out here putting a lot of beans on the roofs and, um, he's hoping over Christmas break, when we're out, they're gonna get a lot of the roofing done out here. Um, and it will obviously continue into the spring. It's a long project, but, um, you should start really seeing some difference out here also. Let's see. Um, athletics, we're in basketball season and, um, so we've got a couple of games every week, either home or away. And we're back to normal on, on those games right now. There's no mandates in place regarding COVID at this time. And we did have six student athletes that got district recognition in football. So I would like to just recognize them publicly. Uh, we did post that on our, um, website and page as well, but Brayden King, Sam Bell, Josh Taylor, Ross Bratton, Ethan Shaver, and Daniel Hadley all earned honors in the district, uh, for the football performance this year. And then you have from garden primary, they mentioned stuff for, got pretty strong after school programs, sixty-eight students coming for that and getting the, get the academic enrichment, but doing some, some fun things too and getting some after school snacks and activity as well. And then some updates on the chess teams in here that she and I were, um, had parent meetings. Tuesday night this week, choir performed, um, for that. And I know we had last week had a great musical performance too by our, um, middle and high school choirs and bands. And so enjoying it to see all of these groups perform this year and get to perform for an audience. That's, that's been a nice change. And Cave, they're having a lot of fun with their five forms, one high competition, but still encouraging each other, but having some good friendly competition, earning some points based on academics, growth on their tests, behavior, just lots of things, um, that they got in place. And you can see they had a big reveal day to find out what team they were on. They all have shirts for their team and the teachers are all, every faculty member is part of a team. And, and they're just really having, having some fun, but pushing those students, but making it competitive and, and for them at the same time. And they also included on page seven, had somebody come out and do some of the, the, the financial, um, instruction, you know, where they were starting to look at a budget and they had so much money and they figured out they were broke pretty quick when they started paying rent and buying a car and having kids and, and all that. So we, that's usually done in high school, but they were doing it with, but that group, um, this year. And they had a great time with that. I think it was real eye opener. I was, I was over there, I think, when she was on site that day and and talking about some of the questions they had and how shocked they are when they realized that, that money doesn't go real far. Um, on page eight with high school and again, I, I mentioned I had their concert, um, last week. It was great, um, performance. We had a big crowd out for that. And band had a fundraiser, um, this month too, Julie with Santa. And I went over there and got some of that. It was really good. And picked up a few extra cinnamon rolls too. Those were fabulous. But they had a good turnout for that. And then, um, also just including some things going on in the different classrooms for you on page nine. And chess presented to you. And then, um, we've got our updates from curriculum assessment, et cetera, from Mr. Bell. And so, um, I'll let you read through those. One thing I did not, um, get in this packet that I did want to mention is, um, we did meet PPC, the personal policies committee met last week, um, to look over the new guidance from the state this year on adopting school calendars. Um, they've given us, there's four different options and we'll be doing some surveys, um, when we get back from break. I've just kind of wanted to put it out there and I'll even email you all the guidance. So you can read through it. But, um, traditional calendar, like we've always done, five day week. Um, you can look at a four day week calendar with extended days on the four days. Can look at a calendar by hours that equate to the number of days. Um, that was a little trickier and, and harder to do on calculating attendance. Um, and then a twelve month calendar option. So those are kind of the four, um, things they give us guidance on. And PPC, I've been sending them some researches. I find it, you know, um, about the different ones, uh, what are the benefits, what are the drawbacks? And we'll be surveying some students, staff and parents, um, when we come back from break to kind of see, just kind of, you know, what, what, um, people would, would be able to support or not support. Um, and then getting back with PPC and you guys on determining a calendar for next year. And we have until May one to submit that. So, you know, we'll probably be wanting to come in March or April PPC to present a calendar for next year. So just wanted to go ahead and put that on your radar and I'll ignore you a little bit more about that since it's different this year. And that's all.
Is there any questions about your thing? Thank you so very much. Next thing is just for that consideration, we do each carry thirty days, each week, meeting coming together. Do we want to continue the mask mandate? Do we want to make the adoption of changes?
It's currently optional.
For the question, our family's both that I. Approve you same size. Approved. The next thing is consider cell phone policies that I, I mean, we, I want to hear each of one of those, but I feel so bad. I went over this. I talked to folks. It just me, I read the current policy and I looked at the new policies and I was torn because what I said was, if we just enforce the policy we got, there is no need for a change. Because I read that policy. If we just enforce what we got, I would prefer to, to propose changes. And I was looking at it because it says what, what, what our issues are. We just need to what? Enforce it. And I also had some parents to call me. I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. Because they were just saying, hey, uh, uh, my children being targeted in searches. My children tell me certain keys, they zip one thing, zip it back up, go on, but others they want to go all the way through it, make it so be there. I said, ma'am, we have a policy. Review the policy. If you have any issues, contact the principals. You don't feel like you can get some care, when the principals contact the, the superintendent. My job, but as for me, I put you through all that, but I like the current policies. I looked at what the issue was, what we got compared to the two proposed, but I just wanted to hear from y'all as well. How y'all feel?
I just know there's a problem with it. Yeah. It was all the what we had a month ago going on, that was all called myself.
Wait, man, my question is, are we enforcing the policy? Because let's just say, I got a cell phone, I recorded it and I put it, you know, I got a what? Cell phone. You know, I'm not using my cell phone, what? Appropriately, the policy is already there. I don't care how it come about. I had my what? Cell phone, cause I had, I'm on both sides. Well, we didn't know about some things. Oh, with they have disappeared. So, and like, when I read the current policy, I'm, I'm with you. That's why we here. I'm with you. Cause I'm like, hey, even if I am doing it, you know, I got my what? What do the policy say? It's in right there. I'm using my cell phone, you know what? Inappropriately. The teacher has not authorized me to use no cell phone. Because the other side of, of this, there are some arrangement issues that my parents said they have. Because hey, my kids have to go here and they call me from here, but when they leave the house, as I look at it, whatever the board decides to do as bad, but I'm just saying, I'm comfortable what we have. It can just enforce it.
And I think the main change is like the, um, lunch is probably the main time that it would be a difference. But it wouldn't be a, you can't like have it for after school activities. It just couldn't be seen or heard. So like they would have to stay in a bag or a locker if they needed it after school. They weren't gonna, y'all weren't gonna like try to search and go through everybody's backpack in the horn.
We've had a lot
Uh, we've had a lot of issues during lunch and um like a lot of fights that have been reported. They're not using it responsibly. Um, the kids are pulling out their phones and videoing. So um that's an issue in itself because they're they're, you know, they can't use it responsibly. Uh, and videoing other students is a problem.
And and I read that in the current policy, it says it right there on at the beginning. It says it right there at the beginning.
Not the same. Is the discipline any different?
As far as with current policy, yes. Uh, it's a lot different than what we have.
Policy for a lot of why.
Well, I think the discipline's not severe enough. Because I've talked to a lot of teachers and a lot of the counselors that come into school. And without fail, everyone of them said the number one thing we got to get hold of is get the cell phones out of the classrooms and out of school because that's root of so many problems. And so we've got to do it. And if we're not gonna do any, I mean, kids think ISS is just another day at school and a place to be. They're that, that's a joke to them. If we want, we really want them out of the classroom, out, you know, not having them, we're gonna have to make it severe enough that they're really not gonna want to do it. I mean, we got to let them know we mean business. We don't, this is not just some kind of joke. We mean business with them not having those phones out. Because how they're supposed to learn what the teachers instruct in the youth when they're sitting there filling with those phones the whole time the teacher's talking.
See, that that's what I'm saying. If 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 I'm in the classroom, it up through my phone while a teacher talking, how do the teacher not know? That's what I'm saying. That I'm there and see that I'm looking, I look at the discipline. We have the discipline, the discipline has discretion to look at the severity of what they be and and use a uh uh advanced appropriation of discipline. It says in the current policy.
I think it should be banned completely with that because our biggest problems at lunch, that when all this troubles happen. They're feminine. If we do completely away with it, we won't have a problem and they get caught with a phone, it's consequences. It ain't no different than us driving sixty mile, miles an hour to this school zone, seven thirty in the morning and expect not gonna get caught. But we're not gonna get a ticket.
But we're, you know, I want everybody to thank us.
Because it's gonna be rough for a while.
Well, I'm 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 looking at what we're saying, because I'm saying, come on. We're blessed because I'm still, everything was in him like, how do we not know this? We just not enforcing. Because let my parent have to come get my phone.
Yep.
Then letting the parent know, I got an issue with your kid, they would. And they phone.
And whatever we decide, we also need to stick it with the teachers too, with that the teachers are not out with it during class to just say, I don't know if it's going on, but I'm just saying, what's good for the goose is good for the game. Because we can't practice what we preach if the t- teachers don't go along with us and abide by the same rules. Which I don't know if there's a problem with that or not. I'm just saying. You know.
I do think we need to include lunchtime. We need to make change to include lunchtime in there. So you mentioned destruction time, but I don't know. We need to make specific lunchtime. I mean, I think we need to get it under control and I think that's all we're gonna be able to do it. It's very rough and enforce it, like you said, we've got to enforce it.
Cause cause I'm looking here, because I read a lot of stuff. I read, I went back, I read admission, I read our statements, I looked at everything, I talked to folk. And to me, that's what it comes back down to. If I'm creating a responsible student, then I got the trust in the follow the rules. I'm not gonna take it away. I'm gonna say, you're entrusted to follow what? Rules. If something happens and you inappropriate recording, then I'm not saying we deal with the first level of discipline. What you did was so severe, I'm recommending level addition, but I I I just can't see totally take it away, but I can see enforcing it.
We didn't have phone for this, fool. I'm just saying, the parents, they get out those kids.
The world we deal with now is not the world these students deal with.
Yeah, but.
It's a whole different, different world now.
I think sometimes it's hard when they give you them out at lunch. You don't know if they're just using it or recording unless something comes back. And then sometimes we have to have the police do a subpoena to even get access because we can't. It just becomes harder. I think that's why they were looking, you know, giving it away at lunch too.
Cause I want to put out there, hey, if it goes down, I want to know, hey, at lunch time, as we're looking at, we we're concentrating on what at the lunchtime. So it's best that you listen to your little music or put it up. But it's whatever we decide tonight. I just want to give everybody opportunity to just just think how they feel, what information they got back, how they feel.
I'm gonna understand, I guess, where we're coming from on besides being recorded. Did the phone call the fight or did the fight call phones? I mean, you know, actually, parents saying, well, did you just not want us to see that? I mean, I'm looking at it from both sides. I don't know.
I look at it as society. Anytime something happened inside, the first thing they put out is what? Your cell phone is starting to record it.
But actually, you're not supposed to report anyone without their permission or knowledge. And and sometimes it's um like there was a TikTok challenge to report a fight, you know, so it's kind of promoting them to look for an instigator new because of that.
And that's why I said reinforce it. Okay, you, yeah, you recorded that fight, but your, then guess what you did? You may not have been fighting, but what you did was you violated our policy. We're gonna enforce the policy because that was inappropriate use of the word, which is already early in the books. And why I say, you got to enforce it. I'm not, I'm okay, I'm gonna be able to fight, but I gotta be able to what? With you violating this policy too.
I think a lot of the fight was caused off of the phones. So if we do completely away with it during school, we ought to eliminate that.
See, then you just need the same thing for your teachers.
We gotta put cameras. We have cameras. They have cameras.
Yeah, we got cameras, so.
The cameras be good again.
We gotta quote, we need to look at it um and then we'll have that.
Which I don't, I don't think that's a problem, but I'm just saying. I think that's a lot of our problem is, and everything starts off with cell phone.
I don't know.
The box, then the recording, and then we eliminate it all, then you you've got eight out for seven, between seven and three with no cell phone. Kids with no cell phone.
Is there now? It is appropriate. Since I read the policy, appropriate use of the note, that tab frame is in there. Cause I'm at the point, we're probably creating responsible individuals.
So the policy now is if they get caught, it's thirty minutes be home?
And.
Thirty minutes be home? Yeah, no.
And when you can modify the consequences for the current policy too.
Well, I'm just saying, I would like to modify the consequences for the incident. Because you do how you use that cell phone.
But it's it's taking away from the teachers teaching and also taking away from the kids trying to learn. The te- the kids that wants to learn taken away from them because their their kid next door maybe trying to sneak and play on a cell phone during class. I'm just saying, fill them all out and be done with it.
I think the main thing that we have, that we're dealing with is social media problems, that talking things where they want to go to the bathroom and, you know, destroy the property and get on TikTok to get likes. Um, we deal with that. A lot of our teachers are having them turn in their phones before they go to the bathroom. That's worked a lot this last two weeks. But um social media is really made it really difficult at schools with the different licks and things that they want to get likes, they want to get views.
And when they post a video before we even know they filmed it, it's out there and a kid may not even know they're out there and you know, then those parents are upset because there was a post of their kid, you know.
It's mine.
It's it, so it's hard to know when they're using it appropriately or not when they have it out without a teacher at every take.
But if you're going to the bathroom, you, uh, if you got a phone, you need to drop it off. I mean, we we got to create responsible students. But we got to enforce what we got.
We need to do a pop, a new policy that completes lunch. We just got to get rid, in my opinion, we need to get rid of.
Social media is killing this whole world, so.
Well, if you responsible, you know.
That's a problem. They're not.
And they don't know.
They don't even respect an adult, more or less gonna respect their own mom and dad.
And they don't know what a provision of unresponsibility is because they're not responsible.
But I think you're talking about a small group of students though. Not the majority of the students.
You can't just take the whole thing out, then you ain't gonna worry about nitpicking on this.
You're destroying a group of minority incident. So what are you saying to these folks that doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Whatever we do is is the law. It's just no, it's no difference in the speed limits out here. It's not just respect fewer people. It's the one that most of breaks the rules, it affects, but it affects everybody.
And that's the, this is a whole.
So.
We have a policy. We do, everything we discuss today is covered in the policy we already had.
It's a rat race.
But lunch covered in the current policy.
No, no, they're able to use their phones and I I don't, I think that ought to be cut out.
So that's the problem with the current policy to me.
So what do they do at lunch?
Like said.
They can help each other and they can eat. That's what lunch is for.
Eat and serve first to the person.
They don't have to be videoing everybody in the room.
So now this is what you say, what you said before. So what do the teachers do at lunch? Remember you said they following the same guideline these students following? That's what I'm looking at.
Well, if they're on DVD.
If they're on DVD, they don't need to be on it anyway. But if they're in their classroom, wondering lunch break, they could do it.
You just.
I'm just saying.
You just, the students can do it and the teachers have the same.
Cut them off then, cut everything out.
Look at that now.
I've never planned that. If someone need to hold them, the school's gotta follow the call.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we got the
I mean, where we.
We can't do just for certain respective kids for this way. We got to do it all we will control. We got to do it for the whole thing from seven to three or don't do it at all. That's just a simple fact. Yeah, we go out, parents may, but I, they can call me. I'll tell them too.
But we gonna instruct the parents to call you. The parenting.
I said, they were.
Call the administration. Cause you can't, you can't individually speak as a board member. We have to speak as a collective group.
That would go over.
Do I think it would be hard to enforce? Yes. At first, do I think it's worth it? Yes.
We have students back your shirt and they're being yes. My middle school, preschool says yes as well. We don't allow them. And if I see them, if we think they have them, I'm gonna get it. And I know that kids still carry them. If I find it and we don't have a problem, we have I mean, not maybe one or two, but I've got one that was a middle school student right there. We don't have that problem. Um, and it's because it's not allowed. They are not allowed. And it's enforced.
Two incidents.
I do know that they, they turn their phones in. We have a card. They turn their phones in. It's that have an extracurricular event after school and they don't go home and they can turn their phone into that card. We give them that benefit for, you know, the parents to know that they'll have that phone in the evening time when I get home and they need to be called. And we we manage that daily.
So basically, they give up their phones at the end of the day before school. Then they took them up at the end of the day.
But that's not what the high school was gonna try. They weren't gonna try to collect and keep the phones, just they can't be seen or heard used during the day, so. They have them for extra.
Probably be different than the other phones in the middle school and high school.
I think you'd be surprised. There are kids in elementary that have cell phones.
I know, but I fear the full, I have more high school kids probably than high school kids. I don't know. Not many more. And I, and I thought now that y'all referenced me, I'd like to bring up something. We do have a problem with these cell phones, whether it's lunch or whatever, because by the time an incident has happened, a phone call has been made to that parent and we're trying to investigate and take care of matters within our building. And we have parents calling us, trying to get in the middle of it. It causes more drama for us and that's ridiculous. So the cell phones are a problem. And our staff, the only time we use our cell phones is if I need to reach them, they're outside or they're in an outer building and we use them. They are not on their phones unless it's instructional or something that I'm needing to get from them as far as like a student to report back in. And they handle it just perfectly. They're very responsible.
I'm good with that. But I think they ought to be good. Cause just like she's, like this Miss Donald said, when something happened, even though she's got a basket full of phone, somebody still got one hot. And now it's all over everywhere. My only concern is, if you put that policy on, the only way to enforce it would be to search every day.
Well, and you're not gonna do that, but if, but if you've got the policy to wear, they have not to have it out.
If I have suspicion.
Yeah, if they got suspicion, they can act.
I have the right to search.
Because it says in the, in the policy.
If they walk in and they have a phone showing in their car pocket, the first thing I do is say that needs to be checked in. It's gonna get you, get your phone put in the cart. I walk them to that cart. They put it in the cart, no problem. If someone gets, if I get someone's phone during the day and there's something that has happened or if a phone goes off in a classroom, I go down to that classroom and I search every single backpack in that classroom, whether I find one phone or four phones. And I still search them, take it to the office, write them up. Whether it's a warning, ours is a warning first, detention second time, two days the third time. And the fourth time, it's usually ISS and then so forth. And I'm usually calling that parent by the second time. And the policy doesn't say that, but I do.
What else? What calls for a vote? A motion now. Okay, no further discussion. Can I have a motion?
Oh, oh, anything?
Well, we got the current policy, we got a proposal of one or proposal of two or you can modify either one or three with a motion.
Get another one in January and then follow over.
Oh, we can, we can see how we do work.
When it come back.
I mean, we we can act like, well, you can be going, I had a little long way there. Or we we can see how it works. I mean, but we, we need to do something here tonight.
I'll make a motion to ban all phones through seven to three. And the consequences go for the proposal. It's with a different uh discipline. And which one was, I see.
Have a new policy if we're gonna do that?
Mm-hmm. This is, this will be the new policy.
This would be the new policy.
You want one or two, Mike? Let's see if you need to, you need to make the motion now.
With the proposal of the second. Yes.
That's the one consequences are on page thirty-eight and that's the two consequences are on page forty. That's the only difference in it too, that I say no use, you know, during the school day, okay, we time.
With the one saying ISS first time, the second time that's a half.
Yeah, I agree with you, but it wants to be allowing them to open up basically on some barriers.
So.
It's motion actually bad, y'all, so.
We're gonna start. So. Start making a motion and if you want.
Start making a motion, and if you want to accept proposal one or two.
What do you think about the consequence?
Well, I like one on the second one better.
Okay. I'll make a motion to ban the phone from seven to three, with the, with proposal number two consequence.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what it's saying. Did he propose that right, or do we need to redo the way?
Well, what happened, he didn't get a second today.
Okay, I will, I want to make a motion to approve proposed cell phone policy version two. I have a second.
We have a motion and second, no further questions, all the families both said aye. Opposing say aye. It'll pass. So we are using to adopt option number two? So I just wanna make sure I got, I wanna make sure I got some clarity here.
Yeah.
I come to school, I have my cell phone. What do I do?
You leave it at the house?
I can't, I cannot leave it at the house, takes a bit of my situation.
Just don't let it be seen or heard, she's not going through.
Do I, do I, no, do I, I'm saying, do I check it in, what do I do, I have to have my cell phone, I have extracurricular activity. So what do I do with my cell phone, I need to clarify a case with these people, so what do I do then? I want them people, I have to have a cell phone.
So if they have it in their backpack, and they don't have it at home.
If it doesn't make a sound, then it's not a class, nobody's gonna bother you.
Except if I'm at the middle school, I check it in in the morning. So if I'm at the middle school, I check it in, if I'm at the high school, it's been not ever come out. Correct, I wanna make sure I, 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 I understand the difference, cause if I go to the middle school, I need to what, check it in in the morning, put on my what, or whatever, the cardio, or something. What do I do at the primary school, cause I know they got them. Okay, it don't, just, don't let it come on.
They come out, they get, the parent gets to come pick it up.
All right, I just wanna say, I, I, I want our constituents to understand what's going on, so they understand. High school, it been not ever show what, show up until after. Primary school, it don't show up, middle school, I better check it what?
Into the car, it's never changed.
No, I'm talking about, so, so, so they know what's going on these different schools, so we explain this to them, remember that? We can't enforce this tomorrow, because we have to, I'm looking at the handbook changes, we have to make sure we give an opportunity to know what the, what the changes are.
We're gonna mail it tomorrow, correct, Miss Yuma?
So I wanna make sure they take it, so we can study, cause we can sit down.
So this, this means they can get it out at lunch?
No.
But, what I'm saying is.
All day, all day.
So that means, it don't come out to after school. So we have to have an opportunity to, this is a good time, they at home, they can read it, they can talk to their parents about it, they can, they can do what they got to do, so they can practice it.
And we're gonna mail it out tomorrow, um, to all the addresses we have on file, if those are correct. And when they get back, she's gonna be some classmates with the students to make sure they really understand exactly what it is, um, before they, you know, implement those consequences, so there'll be communication with parents and with students.
And I just took, basically, what I've gotten as well.
Yes.
Please, it is with you. Hopefully we can curtail this problem and do something. Next on the agenda, I thank y'all for it, sometimes it's a good discussion. The next thing is, I'm gonna put them on. We got a personnel package here, and what it is, is a small personnel package, it's just, it's just a change in in somebody leaving, that is not leaving right now, right? Y'all got a question about the personnel package? Can I get a motion? Can we just accept the personnel package, it does all that?
I'm like, much like said, personnel package.
We have a motion and second, no further question, are you both saying aye? Aye, opposed, you same say, approved. The next thing is other, and I think this is for informational purposes.
Um, yeah, we, that, that's a lot of distraction, so we don't have anything there, yeah, section five other, um. The first half, I did wanna just report that we did get those, um, retention bonuses out in November, um, our staff is appreciative of that, you know. So, and the next one will go out in April, for those who, um, complete second semester with us, um, are, also, I put this, you have, I gave it to you tonight, you have, um, a letter from Vance, our county clerk, and the, um, state kind of financial interest forms, these are required to be done by superintendent and board members, um, and other county officials, and it needs to be completed, it has to be notarized, so I wanna put that out. And then it has to be submitted between January first and January thirty-first to the county clerk's office. So you've got that with you now, um, to work on. And then, and I know some of you asked earlier, but, you know, they did make any changes with, um, zoning law, so, um, based on our shift in populations and boundaries, all zones do have to be re-elected, they're all up for reelection. And then here's your timelines, and you can be collecting signatures now. And you can start filing February twenty-second, you have to file by noon on March first, and then the election will be May twenty-fourth. After the election, they changed it, we have, we have five-year terms, and we'll have to draw lots for one, two, three, four, or five, um, after the election, when the board is installed. And if you have any questions on that, give me a call, and I'll, I'll come to you with mine. And also, um, Jason, I told you, Jason would be here if y'all do have any questions you wanna ask him, financials related to what Leslie was talking to us earlier. Um, I gave you what he gave us, that if you have questions, he is here and ready to answer them, or he's, he has agreed, if y'all want him to come back sometime, he can do that too. He doesn't wanna extend your time, but he wants to be available, if, if you have some questions for him right now, to help you think through those options.
Please, if you have any evaluation, I can, you're back in?
Yes.
Please make sure you have your evaluation ready, we're gonna do that in the January meeting. So please think long and hard, have it completed, we'll get together, and we'll make sure we, as a group, evaluate what I knew something did.
Make a motion.